We'll call this November 17, 2022, meeting of the Reno County Planning Commission to Order. Staff, will you call the roll?
Strand?
Yep.
Schaefer?
Here.
Seltzer?
Here.
Macklin?
Here.
Jones?
Yes.
Martin?
Here.
Gerson?
Here.
Welcome everyone on this brisk evening, brisk afternoon and evening. It warmed up a little bit, but we're in fall. It's a good deal. I trust that you've had a chance to review the packets that you received, and those packets were minutes for the October 20 meeting. Chair will entertain the motion there.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval. Those minutes were quite lengthy and great in detail, and it was a good review, and I move for approval.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of approval of October 20 minutes to the meeting? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Minutes approved. We'll move on to our new business to ensure the rights of all parties of interest and provide an opportunity for each party to address the planning commission in an orderly manner. The planning commission will follow the fact finding procedure, which is outlined in the handout at each chair. Your attention to this procedure is appreciated. If a recommendation is made tonight, the recommendation will be based upon the record of information presented to the planning commission. The county commissioners will not conduct a separate public hearing or accept additional written documents. The county commissioners will consider written requests for additional public comment or documents based only on valid claims that the public hearing process was incomplete or based upon new information which had become available since the public hearing. For purposes of this county commission policy, a public hearing is considered incomplete only if the planning commission failed to follow its procedural guidelines, which resulted in a denial of due process to a party of interest, or if the planning commission failed to allow an interested party an opportunity for public comment. For purposes of the county commission policy, new information shall pertain only to germane information which did not exist at the time of the public hearing, or which was unknown or could not have been discovered with reasonable diligence. An example may be a traffic study that was completed after the planning commission recommendation. Planning commission recommendation to the county commissioners will be accompanied by a summary of proceedings before the planning commission at its public hearing, along with a report and recommendations of the county planner, letters, informal petitions, and other information constituting the record of proceedings provided the planning commission before and during the public hearing. If the planning commission makes a recommendation after tonight's public hearing, this case may be presented to the county commissioners in approximately two weeks or the next available Contact planning staff or visit the website for the county commissioner agenda items. I now formally open the public hearing regarding case number 2022-09, a request by Four J's Holdings LLC, Don Carey, President, to vacate the 20-foot utility easement located between lots one and two, block I of Habit, number three subdivision. The addresses of the property is 1816 East Watts Road. Have any planning commission members had any outside contacts regarding this case?
No.
No.
Do any planning commission members have any conflict of interest in this case?
No.
Will the applicant please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record? You'll have 10 minutes to present your case. Additional time may be allotted at the discretion.
I'm Joe.
Planning commission members may request clarification at the end of your presentation, or may have questions. Sorry, lengthy here.
That's okay. I'm Joe Phillips, COO and President of several companies, Four J's being one. Address is 1816 East Watts Road, Hutchinson, 67501. File for application for abatement in the easement in between our two lots. We've had some growth in our buildings, added onto our buildings over the last several years, and in the process of building a new building. One of the driveways we want to put in is adjacent to the easement. We actually want to cut into the easement to beam trucks into a dock to the building we have now. That area has been fenced off even prior to our ownership since 2005. We bought the building in '05, never been anybody there. We've always kind of respected the easement, so would like to get it debated so we can get the dirt worked done and get in the process again our driveways, but yeah.
Anyone have any questions for the applicant?
I understand there is no utilities in that easement. The actual sewer line is somewhere else on the property.
Yeah, that's correct. It's a tie-together line that was designed, I suppose, once upon a time there was something north of us, so it runs north to south across the backside of our property. It supplies us. There's nothing north of us. It actually runs to the road and runs down Lexington to another building we own. Nothing else there, so there is no other.
Other utilities, other sewer that's in need of it.
That's correct. Even the building that's directly west of it, we signed a contract on today, which we will own, so those two adjacent properties are ours. Electric and water and everything is in the north ditch, so there is no other utility there. Everything else is east of the property line, up and down Watts.
Is there fiber in that area?
There is, yes sir.
You know about where it is on that block, or?
Yeah, so you're gonna be, you're gonna be out on Watts Road.
Okay.
So the other side of it, everything runs up and down Watts. There's nothing on Lexington. It makes a loop back. We've got a building on Lexington to the north and the west, and it loops to that building, but there's nothing on east of there. So the fiber runs, if I can lock the screen there. We just bought this, the fiber runs to this building here, runs down this road, comes into our place here, and runs down this road, supplies the college or other buildings here, and it runs a loop up and around and back to this building here, so it doesn't come on down this side of the road. It's a residential area up here, but I think all that came down Halsted. I don't think it has anything to do with the complex.
Any other questions for the applicant?
You're welcome.
And now, here from staff.
Mark Byation, 20 Planer. As you heard, this is a request to vacate the utility easement. We don't do too many of these, but every once in a while they kind of come up. This is located out at the airbase, and for those of you who don't know the airbase, this is South Halsted Street right here. K96 is just a little bit ways to the north up here. It's about right south of Yoder, and so the area we're talking about is right in here where like the Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center is, and there's some other industrial buildings that are in that area. This came about because the owner has applied for a permit to construct another very large building to expand their business, and as I was reviewing the permit application, it appeared to me that they were building across an established utility easement, and in your packet and on the screen is the same map, and you kind of see the faint dotted line that I have up here. This is the approximate location of where I think they're building their building, and it appears that they were across that utility easement, so that kind of started the conversation, mainly with our utility technician, about is that where they're actually building, or is that where our sewer line is? As it turns out, even though this is an established utility easement here, where utilities could run in, our sewer line is not in that easement. Our sewer line is about 100 feet to the south and the east here, and so the request is to actually vacate this easement, so in fact he can keep the building in that general location of where they want to. You see here another picture, this is the actual survey that they had done. The actual sewer, established sewer line easement is here. They own lot two, and then they own the south 80 feet right now of lot one, so that sewer line was running down through here. Well, the actual sewer line is, like I said, about 100 feet to the south and east, not in an established utility easement. So in discussions with Mr. Phillips here, we said that, well, we would entertain a hearing to possibly vacate this existing easement if in fact that you would provide us with a separate utility easement for our existing sewer line. And I can tell you right now, you see in my staff report, I had put a condition of approval in there about having that established. I can tell you that Mr. Phillips did submit me the recorded deed for that utility easement, so if the board so chooses to vacate this, you know, you could actually remove that condition of approval on there. I do actually have that deed right now, but yeah, it is a little bit of an interesting situation where, again, we don't have our sewer line in the actual easement. So here's a picture of the area. We're looking at this building here, that's their main building, and they're looking at building another one up in this area, which would be tentatively across an established utility easement. With a closer view of the area, Watts Road is right down here. This is where they're addressed off of, and the other building is going to be going up in this area. I went on Google Earth and I pulled some other shots. These are from 2021, so you can see right now it's just grassland, if you will. There's no utilities or anything that are in there. This is their existing fence, and then their existing building is over here. You're kind of looking about south, southwest or so. The existing utility easement would be like, you might be able to help me out, Mr. Phillips, would be like probably down in this area, right in here?
Yeah, the current easement, if I can kind of, the current easement as it's laid out right now actually lives here, but the sewer is actually here.
Pretty close to that building.
Well, no, it's under that building.
Is it under the building?
Yeah. The actual sewer itself is about centerline of this dock, come off this face right here. So it's actually already under that building now.
Is another easement where the sewer line actually exists?
Yes. Yeah, that's what this other document that I had here did.
Is that the parcel that Mr. Phillips is ceding to you for an easement?
Yes.
Yeah, that's correct.
This right here, as you just heard him say, yeah, this is where the actual sewer line is. This is, this legal description you see down here was placed in a deed and deeded to, not deed, put on an easement, you know, and recorded, registered deeds, to give us the right to go in there and repair our sewer line should need arise.
But the actual sewer line runs under the building now?
Yes sir. Yeah, that offset the back of the building right here, right there, that he's got his mouse over. You'll go back to that. The actual sewer line now, you tee off here, so this is actually a manhole here in this property. It runs down, there's a manhole set right here. The actual sewer line runs about eight or nine foot. It's about right there across there is where the actual sewer line is.
Yeah.
And the easement is here, right here. So I don't know, it's 125 feet or something different from where the easement's at, from the actual centerline of the easement.
As you said, yeah, there's another manhole up here on this property with a line here. Again, not in a utility easement, so it's a little bit of a concern or a mess, you know, out there with that, you know, and so we hope to maybe one day be able to kind of correct some of this stuff, but we were fortunate that they've been willing to grant us that easement so we can actually legally go in there and maintain our line if we need to, so nothing in that existing line right now, so. So with that, staff recommends approval of that to vacate the easement. I can tell you that it's a little bit different. As you, if you've not done one of these here, probably back in March, I think we did one, you know, that there's three criteria that the commission must find to be in favor of vacating an easement. That's proper notice was given to the public. The public will suffer no loss or inconvenience by the vacation, and also no private rights will be injured or endangered with that, so with that, I would stand for questions.
Mark, I have a question, better answered by Mr. Phillips, says, could you give me a little quick education of what is Four J's Holdings all about? What do you do?
Sure. Well, actually, Four J's Holdings is just the company that we hold all the real estate in. We own Yoder Smokers, Straight Line HDD, and Source HDD. Four J's is just legal entities that we hold the properties in as an LLC, so they're not under our inks. So that's what Four J's does. Yoder Smokers, we manufacture offset wood pits, pellet grills, et cetera, et cetera. And then our two HDD companies, Source HDD and Straight Line HDD. Source HD, we buy, refurbish, and resell used directional drilling equipment, and then Straight Line, we manufacture downhole directional drilling tools. So we have a bunch of fab and machine shops and a big mechanic shop. We own about, guys, I don't know, about 350,000 square feet on the airbase out there, and there's only two buildings left out there that aren't ours, so we occupy most of this complex, and all that manufacturing happens out there.
And this whole process is because you're going to expand some of it?
Yes sir.
Hire some more people?
Yes sir.
Pay some more taxes?
Pay some more taxes, right?
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna, you know, petitionize to build another 25,000 square foot on that corner as a shipping and receiving building. We've just outgrown our space. We employ about 170, you know, Lord will, and when the economy stays together, we'll be, you know, a couple of hundred next year. You know, we've been, Yoder in particular has made ink 5,000 in the last seven years consecutive, which is a big deal. We're one of, we're a premier brand in the outdoor cooking world, built in the armpit of Yoder, Kansas, and that crazy, and we built it all right up there at the complex.
Wow. Thank you.
You're welcome very much.
Mark, do I dare to ask how we came to have a sewer somewhere, sewer line somewhere where there was not an easement? Was that there for?
It's been there since the airbase was established, I think, and then this subdivision, I think I said in my report, in the mid-'70s, like 1975, and so hard telling why an easement was placed there and not placed where the actual sewer lines were. I don't have that information.
So that's probably why the building was built over it, because the easement was in a different spot?
Yes.
You didn't know?
Yeah, I would guess so, and I have done that out there, not in this industrial area, but in another area of that subdivision where I issued a permit for a residential addition, and it was across a sewer line, a main sewer line, that was not in the easement. And so I look at the plat, the plat says the easement's to the west. I issued a permit, come to find out later that no, that's a mainline sewer that we allowed to be built across, and so it's a real concern on our end, you know, with all those lines.
We can thank some admiral somewhere for his accuracy in his maps, great.
Well, even on the military.
Sewer lines are not necessarily in the actual easements, unfortunately, out there.
This is the point in the discussion where I usually ask Mr. Britton if there is any possible conceivable situation or circumstance which he might find having the present easement to be useful or necessary, and he always says no, his crystal ball is such that he can't conceive of such a thing, so I'll ask you, is there absolutely any reason that we would want to continue, or do you foresee any future use of the existing easement?
Anticipating your question, I did ask Mr. Britton. Before he left, he apologized that he can't be here today, but his answer to you is no.
Mark, I understand the problem, I think, I just, it seems odd that the county is going to have an easement under somebody's building, and are there implications from entering into that kind of a situation?
Well, I mean, if we need to get in there and repair it, that'll be something we'll have to work with the owners on, what we needed to be able to repair that sewer line. I think, you know, the intention or the hope maybe in the future would be to actually relocate that line possibly, and you do that by, say, replating the area and reestablishing easements, and so that would be the hope, and one way to kind of correct some of these issues is go in there, have a study done, figure out where the actual sewer lines are, even where the water lines are, because this is also served by a separate water district, and figure out where those are, figure out where the easement should be, and then go in and replat it and stuff, and so that's one way to do it. But yeah, it's a concern when you have a mainline sewer underneath any structure for that matter. We did a little bit of that correction many years ago when KLET C expanded their operations here. They actually replatted several of those lots, vacated the road, vacated some other easements, and relocated some of those utility easements out there, so that area should be okay. But the rest of it, it's a concern.
In that situation, we'd have to find another easement, though, or we'd have to purchase or wire.
Well, the owner, the owner of the property would grant that easement through that replating process, we would hope.
Well, there are ways to repair or rehab a sewer line without digging it out.
Yeah, it's not necessarily digging through concrete. I mean, there are ways, they're not easy by any means, but there are ways to potentially fix a sewer break without having to go in and excavate, if you will.
Well, I guess my question is, should we be looking for an easement without a building? I mean, I understand we need an easement on what actually is, but when that time comes in the future and that sewer line needs to be relocated, what's to say there hasn't been a building built over where a sewer line needs to be?
Where we need to go.
So, yeah, it's something that, you know, we're looking at, you know, because we're looking at doing a rehab project, you know, in this area anyway, and so that's something that's on the list as to where are we going to go with sewer lines and everything and utilities, and so. Nothing else, you know, you could go down the road right of way. You don't necessarily have to go, you know, across the actual parcel, but yeah, it's something that is a concern.
And if I may interject there, all the sewers for this particular building and our other buildings are all in the road anyway. This crossover along the back of the property must have been for structures that are no longer there, because it literally does nothing. It's not even tied to our building. Our actual sewer coming out of that building comes to Watts Road.
Oh.
What its purpose is, there's nothing north of it, there's no building north of it, and the sewer has actually run down Watts and Lexington already. So that particular sewer and both of those plots must have been for when the base was there and there was other structures there, because they serve no functional purpose to the ecosystem now on the base. My building's not even, I mean, it is commonly tied to it, right, because it makes a loop, but my building's not tied to it. Our sewer comes out of that building, goes south along Watts Road, and connects in the easement along Watts Road. It doesn't connect to that line at all.
Okay, well, I feel better now.
Yeah.
So is that sewer line then generally dry?
There's not much in it ever. But because you have no buildings populated utilizing it, I think its primary function would have been to the old pool building in the other lot adjacent to it, where that manhole is, I think would have been its purpose in life once upon a time. Again, we just purchased that building, there's nobody in it. So I just, I think it's literally serves no purpose at all.
You purchased the building with the black roof there?
Yes sir.
So all that land is yours now?
Yeah, well, we've not closed on it yet.
Yeah, but in the process.
Yeah, yeah. So yeah, everything you see from road to road there in that whole rectangle is ours, or will be ours. And there's sewer lines down both sides of the road, so why it's even there has to be prior tense and not current tense.
Yeah, like say your sewer line runs out of that building, it tees into that easement there, but yeah, it's not in. It's hard to tell if it does serve a purpose, but it is the county sewer line, so if it does serve some type of function, it really should be put in an easement to give us a legal right to go in there and make necessary repairs.
So where does your new building hook into the sewer?
It'll hook into that ditch along Lexington, or Yorktown, I'm sorry. Building will be, this fence actually moved back 80 feet to give the setback to the permit, and there's sewer actually here. Sewer gas and sewer and gas this side of the road, water this side of the road, so we'll tap into the sewer and water here.
And the building with the black roof, where does it hook up?
You know, I think, don't hold me here, but all the water and utilities are in this corner. I think it comes out here to this road, but I don't know that. There's a manhole here, it's dead dry.
Okay.
There's nothing in it. There's a line runs, supposed to be a line run somewhere through here that they were out looking at, and this is ours as well, this little corner here. There's a manhole back in here, but it's dry, there's nothing in it, so I think all the current structures run up and down the roads. Now again, what purpose those other things serve, I can't answer for you.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this case? Okay, seeing none. You have anything more to add?
No, sir, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time.
Thank you. Staff, you have anything more to add?
I don't.
The board have any other, any more questions for applicant or staff? The public hearing is now closed. Acceptance or denial of the vacation request must be based on the finding that proper notice was provided to the public. The public will suffer no loss or inconvenience by such vacation, and no private rights will be injured or endangered. At this time, we can discuss and ask the staff of any procedural questions. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, staff, or excuse me, chairman will entertain a motion.
I move that case number 2022-09, request by Four J's Holdings LLC, requesting 20-foot utility easement located between lots one and two, block I of, or one, I'm not sure what, of Habit, number three subdivision, be vacated as described in this petition, finding that proper notice is being given. Public will suffer no loss or inconvenience by the vacation. No private rights will be injured or endangered, including the one condition of approval based on the reasons as listed in the staff report and as heard at this public hearing.
Do we need the condition?
No.
No.
No, we don't need the condition, right? Because it's already, you already have.
If you'd like to amend your motion, we don't need that, because like I say, I did receive the actual deed for that, so if you want to strike that, you.
Strike that part of it then, that last sentence. Did you have a second on that?
Nope.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
The fluid happens.
Staff call a roll.
Strand?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Seltzer?
Yes.
Macklin?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Gerson?
Yes.
Go, man, go.
Guys, have a great afternoon.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll open up the next case, the. Okay, we'll open up the, the next case, the... The expectations that were read at the beginning of this meeting, as all of it still stands, we'll, we'll open case 2022-10, a request by Jerome J. and Barbara H. Meyer Revocable Trust and the Jerome J. and Barbara H. Meyer Revocable Living Trust and Craig and Crystal Meyer to, to vacate a portion of the 16-foot utility easement located between lots seven and eight, block one of the Cedar View Lodge Replat Subdivision. Address of this property is 25306 South Cedar View Drive. Have any of the planning commission members had any outside contacts regarding this case?
No.
No.
Do any of the planning commission members have a conflict of interest in this case?
No.
Aplican, if you'll please come to the podium, state your name and address. For the record, you have 10 minutes to present your case. Additional time may be allotted and at the discretion of the chair.
Thank you, gentlemen. Craig Meyer, I own lot eight. Is that right? Yeah, and bought a portion of lot seven, and I would like to construct a garage. In between eight and seven, there was a, there was a 16-foot utility easement there. No utilities in it, and I'd like to vacate that 85, not quite 85, but what's in blue I'd like to vacate. Talking with Mark and different county people, if you notice, there's a utility easement running north and south through all the lots. Discovered the county had a manhole in the land I purchased that was not in the utility easement. So I said, how about I extend that utility easement where we get your sewer into a easement? And I've done that. And I'm just wanting to put up a 40 by 44 garage, and doing away with that easement with no utilities in it would give me the room to do that and follow, keep with the old set map. I don't know. I've got a couple maps here, if you guys would like to...
I probably have one. Which one? You had a survey?
Yes.
Yeah, I have that. I have on screen, and they have it in a package, too.
Yeah, I've got a survey, I've got a sketch.
You have something different. We can certainly give it to you.
It's all I did, Mark, was in red. The shaded red would be my building.
Okay. Is this for the record, or you need this back?
I, I don't need it back. I've got a couple more copies, too.
Okay.
I just made some copies. I've never done this, gentlemen, so...
Appreciate that.
But I can get a couple more of those.
I can make copies, that's fine.
Keep that or not. So that's the new building?
Yeah. I, the shaded red would be my building. The green would be what I want to get rid of. The red is what I gave the county already.
Okay.
Gotcha. I'm confused a little bit. You said you have lots six and seven?
No.
No.
No?
I have lot eight, and I bought the north, this is north, the north 49-foot of lot.
You gave something to the county.
Seven.
And that's a seven now, and I thought it was a one.
Sir, can you tell me again, the red is what?
The red would be, I gave this easement to the county, because there's a manhole right there.
Right.
That was never in one. So I said, well, why don't we just extend this through? This easement stays.
This is, the hash mark is your building site.
That would be where I would like to put my building.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
So the sewer is in that north-southeast?
Yes, the sewer line, manhole about right there and runs that way. And there's no other utilities in. My phone line might run through there, but it's been disconnected for years.
So further up to the north in that easement, there's other utilities, is that right? Like electric and telephone or...
Going north, it's just sewer. Power comes in overhead to a pole right here in the corner. I D-Tech fiber is in this corner, feeds this house right here. My house is fed off a pedestal over here, and phone line runs in this easement and stops at a pedestal And 49-foot might seem a little weird. Anyway, we've lived out there since 2005. When I bought the house I live in, I added on to it. This 49-foot section, everyone thought it was an empty lot, because my neighbors had a chain link fence. It just was a strip through there, and I finally talked them into selling it to me.
Gotcha. Okay.
The entrance to the garage you're building is where, on this draw?
It would be west.
Coming off of Cedar View?
Yes, yes.
And is there a house on block seven?
Yes.
Okay.
But that was the big lot.
Okay.
Essentially, what I, this is my house. That's a chain link fence. I essentially bought from the chain link fence that way. And the building would set. And I actually bought this from my parents, the whole Jerome J. Barbara H. Revocable Trust. They're my mortgage company, so their name's still on it, is why they were listed. But my dad had built that carport before I ever bought it. But, so that carport's actually in the easement now.
So is the property for your neighbor to the south, is it kind of an L shape now?
No, I bought...
So you bought all the way across?
Yeah, all the way across.
Okay, okay.
And manhole's about right there. So that's why I told the county I don't have a problem giving an easement through there. I'd never build on it anyway.
So your property is L-shaped now?
Yes, my property is L-shaped. Yes, sir.
I'm glad you asked the question. I was confused.
Yeah. Any other questions for applicant?
I just got a question about history of the neighborhood. Did the restaurant used to be on that corner where that storage building?
Yes, sir.
Parking lot is?
Yes, sir.
I remember going there years ago, but...
You know, when I was a kid, there's a, there's a barn-shaped A-frame out there my parents owned when I was in high school. We'd go out there, back when it was the dry dock. It was really good.
Yeah.
But it got decrepit. The boat storage place actually looks a lot nicer than what it looked like.
Good.
Good to hear.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Staff?
I don't know if I have too much to, to add. I may repeat some of it here. I'll try to reemphasize what Mr. Meyer had said. If this area looks familiar, we were in this area last month, down Chiny Lake area. We were over here with the RV storage facility that was proposed last month. So this is the subdivision on the, on the west side of Willis Road. So to help you with, with this map, according to my, my notes here, a few years ago, in 2020, we did vacate this portion of easement for this gentleman, so he could build a garage. So back there, it was determined at that time that we did not need that portion of that easement. We did leave a little bit of a portion of that easement, just so we can turn around and do equipment repairs on that area. So we did vacate that. We're under consideration right now for the area that's highlighted in blue. It's about 77 feet. You'll notice on, on the survey that we're not vacating it to the property line, because this is the existing sewer line easement that's got utilities in it. And as Mr. Meyer said, the area in red is what he dedicated to the county for repair, because just like the last case, once again, when Mr. Meyer applied for what we call a lot split to purchase that 49 feet, he had a survey done. Upon review of that survey, we discovered that there's a manhole that is part of the county sewer system that was not in a utility easement once again. So as he had said, through conversations with him, we said, okay, we'll consider maybe vacating this western part of that easement if you would be so kind as to grant the county an easement, so we can legally go in there and repair our, repair and maintain our own manhole and sewer line in there. So he has done that. So that's what the red, red is on, on the, the map here. A little bit better depicted here, you can see like the manhole was, was south of where the easement was. How that happens, hard telling. You know, this is a plot that was done in the late 60s again, sewer system, and they just did not put it in, in an easement like they should have. And so if you looked at your copy of the survey, you'll be able to see that, you know, the utilities are running in this portion of the easement, and then they just stopped. There's nothing that goes on, onto the property and to, to the west. So there was one call that was done on that, and that came back, no, no utilities as well. So again, the area, subdivision, his house is up here, and then he purchased that, that strip of ground, like he said, in there. And so then his building, again, will be sitting in here. Again, if you looked at the survey, the carport is actually in the utility easement, as well as a portion of his, his fence. The neighbor's fence is actually in the, in the utility easement as well, but you know, that happens. These are really old pictures. This is the latest that Google Earth have, which you can see the carport that's in there. I'm not sure if it's changed much in, you know, 15-plus years or what have you, but that's the, that's the carport that's in the utility easement, and then the fence. And this is looking to the east. I'd be looking to the east. The other side of the road, the other road, that's looking back to the west. You can see there's the power pole that stops in the middle of, of these. But this is the neighbor's, neighbor's house behind him, along with his fence. And this strip of ground right here is actually what he purchased. That's the 49-foot strip of ground that he purchased. You can see their fence to, to the west. So the building will be sitting, you know, in that area. That's all I have. Again, same three criteria as we discussed in the last case. Staff recommends approval. I do not have any other conditions of approval for this one as well. So with that, I'd stand for, for questions.
One more time, Don Cristobal says that there is never any possibility of leaving that.
Correct. Don says no. Does not, does not need that easement. Nope. Sewer runs up the middle of all those, those houses, and there's no, no need or desire to, to go on with that sewer line to the west. All the sewer runs down like the road and up through, up through there. So yeah, there's no need, no need for that.
Mark, is there, is it the telephone line, or is there a reason why the east section of that east-west utility easement isn't being vacated?
There's utilities in it. Our sewer line is actually in there.
So the sewer line goes to the east as well? It like...
It comes up the road and then it goes in this portion. It goes on the east side, and it goes to the middle.
Okay, so it kind of comes up the road, then goes west, and then goes between the houses?
If you get back to the map, yeah, I didn't have a picture of our, our manhole, but yeah, it'll come, it'll come up the road and then go into this easement here, and then it goes and turns north and goes between the houses. And so that's why we're not doing this, because there's lines and stuff in there. There's utilities in this portion of the, of the easement. So we would not be able to consider vacating something like that.
Then did it go back west again, up north, where you vacated that easement?
No, just, uh, well, it would go, yeah, it goes down here and that easement there.
Oh, yeah.
It doesn't go, it doesn't go up here and then turn, you know, it, it stops right, there's like a manhole that's right, right up in here.
And then it goes west?
Yeah, and then it goes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So yeah, so there's, there's no need for this, this segment right here.
But from there east, there is a lot of, there's a lot of stuff going on there.
Yeah, there's, there's utilities in there. Like you said, you know, there's, there's fiber, there's the, the power pole that's in there, plus our sewers in there, yeah.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you. I don't know if there's anyone here in the audience that have any comment? You have anything?
I think it's a good idea to vacate it.
I was just gonna ask, if you had anything more to add. I think, I think you just had your chance.
Your neighbors like you better than they like the guy last night.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, staff, do you have anything to add?
No. No, sir.
Does, does the board have any other further questions for applicant or staff?
No.
Public hearing is now closed. Acceptance or denial of vacation request must be based on finding that proper notice was provided to the public. The public will suffer no loss or inconvenience by such vacation, and no private rights will be injured or endangered. This is, at this time, is there any, any further discussion on this case? If there are none, chairman, chair will entertain a motion.
Assistant Chairman, I would move that with regard to case number 2022-10, a request by Craig and Crystal Meyer, requesting a 16-foot utility easement located between lots seven and eight, block one of Cedar View Lodge Replat Subdivision, be vacated as described in this petition, finding that proper notice has been given, and the public will suffer no loss or inconvenience by this vacation, and that no private rights will be injured or endangered. I'm going to stop there with my motion unless you have suggestions of something I need to add or... I second your motion.
Good move and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, staff call a roll.
Fran? Yes. Shaffer?
Yes.
Seltzer?
Yes.
Macklin?
Yes.
Dorns?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Gerson?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I'm ready.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, last item of business, item C on our, on our agenda, our discussion and possible action considering the text amendment to Article 13 of the zoning regulations requiring minimum yard requirements for each zoning district. We discussed this last month primarily having to do with lot splits, am I correct? With agricultural lot splits?
Um, this is the, that was one item that we discussed. This one pertains more to...
Setbacks.
Maybe the, entertaining the option of, of making the setbacks more uniform across the, the regulations, pros and cons, or direction from the board.
Fair enough.
On that, I think...
Now, what you, what you gave us is what you're, what there, is that a, a potential proposal, or is...
Yeah. What I gave you is the actual article within the regulations, what the different setback. You'd be looking at minimum yard requirements, and so like in the agricultural district, it's 50, and all the other zoning districts is 30 feet off the road right of way. Your side yards, you know, are listed there as well as the rear yard, and those are the minimum requirements. And I believe Mr. Britton, last month, you know, put forth a proposal maybe to see if there's a possibility of maybe making these all more uniform instead of the way they are right now. Like in the agricultural district, it's 50, but in a residential district, it's, it's only 30. And so I think where we left it last month, you know, it was a, a late evening. I think he just wanted the, the board, Mr. Chairman, to kind of put together some thoughts and see maybe where we want to go with this. You know, nothing obviously be decided tonight or anything, but maybe give us staff some direction on, you know, what, what the board thinks we should do with that.
So you're thinking like 30 feet all the way?
30 feet all the way, something like that, or less, or, or more?
I did have one thought. If I'm the last residential lot next to an agricultural tract, I might want a little more separation.
Yeah, those are the type of things that, you know, to think about and potentially, you know, discuss, you know. Because you gotta remember situations like that, if you're the last residential lot next to an ag, you know, an ag lot, and if we change that setback to 10 feet, five feet, eight feet, what does that do? And, and all those types of scenarios. And I think if we, if we move forward with something like that, we can, the staff can put together some scenarios and show you guys some examples of what... we can, the staff can put together some scenarios and show you guys some examples of what certain things would do if we reduce setbacks. You know, I...
I was curious if anyone knew any of the history on the, the side yard differences in the residential districts, because it seems like two feet is not...
You sneeze when you serve it.
Yeah, yeah. But, but it, it adds complexity, and I, I was wondering if there was a reason behind that that I wasn't seeing.
I, I think, I don't know if Mr. Jorns would remember too, I think our, our discussion is probably at that, at that time, R-two and R-three zoning districts, you gotta kind of look at the setback requirements, but you also gotta look at the minimum lot area. And so, when you're dealing with R-two and, and R-three, you're dealing with lots that are gonna be generally less than three acres in size. More likely, you're gonna be dealing with half acre, acre, acre and a half lots. And so, when you, when you do that, you have less, less room on your property, obviously, to, to develop, because you have less acreage. And so, when you start throwing in ten, twenty-foot setbacks, thirty-foot setbacks, you start kind of squeezing people as far as getting a house, a detached garage, a shed, you know, on the property. Plus, you gotta remember too, wastewater well has to fit in there as well. So, I think the idea at that time was to reduce it by at least a couple of feet here, so that way, that affords people a little bit more opportunity to, to get a, a building in that they desire, instead of, you know, having to reduce the size of a building, or, or apply for variances, if you will.
I think I asked you last week, or last month, what, what's the city do on their, on their residential? They're, they're less than, they're less than eight, aren't they? Do you remember?
It might be five.
Well, it used to be five. It used to be five foot on the side, ten foot on the rear setback line. Yeah, remember though, like, a lot of utility easements are gonna be at least ten foot. And so, if you've got a ten-foot utility easement on your side, you're not gonna be able to put a building five feet, you're gonna have to be ten foot instead, so.
I keep rolling around in my head a situation where somebody is in compliance at this point, but at some point in the future wants a lot split, or wants to divide something, and we may not have the, may not have the footage necessary to accommodate that. Maybe that's a good thing. Maybe we don't want to encourage him to split the lot if it's that, if it's that small. But I'm just trying to see what, what could possibly happen out there, you know, the law of unintended consequences, as I say. And I've not come into any really things that I think are bad alternatives. There are situations where they might not be able to do it, which was probably a good thing anyway, so. On a lot split like that, like he's talking about, what is the minimum? I mean, I mean, can you do that, like on an R-two or three? Can you split those lots?
Yeah, you know, you gotta look at the zoning district first off when you're considering lot splits, and, and lot splits don't go through this board, they stay with me. And so, for example, you know, in the R-two zoning district, you have to have a minimum of an acre. So, if, if somebody has two and a half acres of land in zone R-two, they could split that into, you know, a one and a quarter, and a one and a quarter, or they can split it into, you know, a one and a two and a half, what, what have you. Now, saying that, you know, there's a caveat with that. Still gotta be in compliance with sanitation code if, if it is on something a well, you know, you can't make that non-conforming. You still gotta be in compliance with the buildings as well, you know. So, you can't, that's when you, I guess that's when you transit, transition back into the minimum yards, you look, okay, the side yard setback is eight feet. So, when you're doing your lot split proposal, you can't make that new property line four foot from your building, because the minimum is, is eight. See, it's a situation where, when you're dealing with like a two and a half acre parcel of ground, and you've got an accessory building, and it's eight feet from the property line, it's in compliance with that zoning district. So, you're not gonna be able to draw that new line and make that new setback four foot. That's gonna make your building non-conforming, and we don't allow non-conforming uses. Saying it another way, you can't take a conforming parcel or a conforming building and make it non-conforming, okay? So...
So, I'm considering the situation of a, of a residence where maybe somebody wants to provide a, a, a mother-in-law house, or a very small residence tied to their, their present residence, or in, in that vicinity, and where we may not be able to, that might be a good thing, that somebody wants to accommodate a, a relative, or an incapacitated person, or a family member, or a mother-in-law, whatever. May not be able to do that, because we may not be able to, may not have the footage to, to do that.
Yeah, you, you would not be able to make, make a parcel either non-conforming. So, you know, if you have, you know, say you had a, a one acre parcel of, of ground that's zone R-two, and you need or want to sell your neighbor, you know, ten feet of that, give him a sliver of your property for, for whatever reason it is, well, now that's gonna drop you below that two acre minimum, that one acre minimum in this case in R-two. So, therefore, you would not be able to, to split that, unfortunately, because you're making the parcel non-conforming, and then you, then the buildings as well. So, then what happens with that? You know, if something unfortunate happens and a building is destroyed, it can't be rebuilt, because now that parcel is non-conforming. So, that's the type of stuff that I review and make sure that that's still in conformance that way.
There, can you see any reason, or maybe if we're looking at setbacks and all this kind of stuff, minimums, lot sizes, that we should be also talking to, like Darcy with the Health Department, as far as getting her input, as far as septic systems, water wells, and whatnot?
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, though, if we decide to try and, and look at something like that, I think at, at some point in time, we, we need to call her in and, and get her input on what our regulations are doing to her regulations.
Creating issues.
Yes, absolutely. I mean, even though we're separate departments, we obviously work together on...
And then they'll have to comply with everything, us and them, so.
Right, yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, so, yeah. A little early right now, just in this general discussion, but yeah, if, if we move forward with some proposals, then definitely, you know, we would ask her to attend, and so we can have her input, absolutely.
The thought that keeps entering my mind is, you know, we, we are the county, and there's a city, and several cities within the county, and some of those cities could expand someday in the future. And are these numbers gonna be compatible with any existing city setbacks? And does that need to be looked into?
Talking about an annexation situation, if the, if a city would annex?
Without looking at, you know, all the regulations, I would say yes. I mean, the, the one concern that I would have would maybe be on the, the front yard. You know, if, if you reduce the front yard setback to the road, probably much below twenty-five feet, you know, that could be a concern if, if a city would, you know, annex something. I think cities are usually gonna be thirty, maybe twenty-five feet from a road right of way. Now, on your side and, and rear yard, there would not be a concern there. I don't believe the city has those types of setbacks out there. They have the same type of logistics as we do, as far as you can't build in a utility easement, or you can't build in a drainage easement here. You wouldn't have to worry about the agricultural district. The city's not gonna be annexing agricultural land, and so...
I guess my mind would be more comfortable if I thought that we, our numbers were always greater than any possible cities.
Yeah.
Then I would be comfortable doing what we would maybe consider doing.
Yeah. You know, on the ten feet, the eight feet, it might be, it might be pretty compatible with that. The city, like, like Jack said, it might be five feet, you know. It's just, but there again, it's gonna depend on what is the zoning district. You know, in our olden days here, you know, we had zero-foot setbacks if you were zoned industrial. And so, like with the previous case we just heard, it would have been zoned industrial, and so they could build that really on the property line if they wanted to. So, there's some incompatibilities with, with cities in that respect, but I would not, I would not really take into consideration the ag district, because like you said, the city's not gonna have any agricultural land in their, in their city limits. The other, the other districts, um, I'd have to look. I'd have to do some research to see if, what the setbacks are for South Hutchinson, Hutchinson, Bueller, the other ones that have zoning. A lot of the other cities in the, in the county don't have zoning, and so, we don't have to worry about that.
That'd probably be good to check, because it would be, it probably wouldn't be a good thing for the property owner if we allowed them to build with a smaller setback, and then they get to annex ten years in the future, and then their house burns down, and they can't rebuild it.
Right. They would be able to rebuild on the parcel. They may, the issue would be...
They might have to build a different house, though, wouldn't they?
They have to build a different house, or they may have to relocate it on the property, something, something along that line.
Something different would happen.
Something along that. So, so if you had a, you know, a, a house for whatever reason that was two foot from a property line, and it, it was destroyed, or you tore it down, yeah, now that house is gonna be, have to be shifted to where it's five feet, seven feet, eight feet off of the property line. But, but it, in no instance should you have it to where you, you could not rebuild. Now, I can tell you, the city does have concerns about it, because they have a lot of houses that are zoned commercial or industrial. So, that does pose, you know, an issue. In our case, we don't have that industrial or commercial element, and so, there should not be a problem. And then usually, when, when the city will annex property, they will look at what the use is on that property, and try and assign a zoning district that is compatible with the use that's occurring on that property as well.
Only R-two, R-three, and V-one, is there, what is the general largest lot size that would be on those? Or is there such a thing?
You know, the village district, working backwards, you know, that's only gonna affect the interior of Yoder, and then a little bit of Midora, the triangle, if you will, of Midora. So, those lot sizes are generally gonna be probably less than an acre.
Those are already plotted out.
They're already plotted out, yeah, yeah.
Behave in Yoder, and that's basically it.
Yeah, just those two. R-three, um, you know, R-three, you know, I would say generally speaking, you, you could probably be looking at lots of upwards of an acre in size, or, or more, because I think the, the industrial part that we just looked at, I think those are R-three as well. And so, you're looking at something, now that's kind of an anomaly, I guess, but those are larger lots. Those could be three, three, four acres or, or greater in size. But the reason that they're zoned R-three is the fact that they're served by public sewer and public water. I think if you take that element out, I think, you know, your R-three district is gonna be, again, probably lots that are acre and a half or, or less in size. Your R-two district, uh, you know, your minimum is gonna be, you know, an acre. I think, you know, you could have some, some instances where you have a parcel that's pushing close to three acres on that size as well. You gotta remember, three acres is the minimum for R-one, and so, any parcel that is minimum one acre up to two-point-nine-nine could actually be zoned R-two. Now, I will say that there's gonna be probably some computer glitches, you know, when we did our, our zoning map, and there could be some, you know, parcels here and there that are, that are above three. But, yeah, generally speaking, you know, you're gonna be looking at parcels above an acre up to almost three.
Little better idea what you're dealing with.
Yeah. And see, then, if you go and you start comparing, and I think where, where Dom was coming from, if you compare the ag and the R-one, R-one, minimum three, upwards of thirty-nine-point-nine-nine acres. And so, now, if you've got a parcel that's thirty-five acres, for example, now you can build your, your house thirty feet from the roadway. But if you add, you know, one one-hundredth or two one-hundredths of acre more, and you were zoned ag, now that same house has to be fifty feet. And it has to be, all your buildings have to be thirty feet from the property line, just because you're now at forty-point-oh-one acres instead of the thirty-nine-point-nine-nine acres. And so, that's a little bit of that discrepancy there, a little bit. And that was, I think, the challenge that he had to you guys is, why fifty in the ag? He challenged me too, for that matter. So, you know, you're not alone in that. Why is it fifty in the ag, and then all of a sudden, it's only thirty in, in the residential? Why don't we just streamline that at thirty or twenty-five, something?
In the ag zone, Ken, I'm gonna pick your brain just a little bit. Could it be that the setback, that the front yard setback was set at fifty, larger than the rest, due to the, there was, there wasn't any guidelines on, on maximum height? You know, somebody could build a grain bin that was in a leg, a hundred-foot tall leg, and a seventy, seventy-foot tall bin. And the thought process was that we needed, we wanted it fifty feet off the road rather than thirty feet off the right of way? I don't know, that'd be my question.
Makes sense.
Yeah, it does make sense. And you could have a scenario like Garce was talking about, where you have a, a property zoned ag next to a, you know, a, a housing development, and they put in a leg right next to someone's front yard.
Or like livestock.
Yeah.
Something or other.
I mean, not to twenty feet, it's gonna, yeah.
Make a big...
Yeah, make a bit, something.
Make a, I mean, there in Hutch, I know, or the, the Thirtieth and Plum, I think, there's a payday loan thing they put in there, which the owner of the lot before it was built, got the city to allow a, a reduction in the setback. And it's, it does...
It's just right there, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, it, you kind of obstruct your, your view of traffic a little bit. I mean, saving races, there's stoplights there.
I think I was in on that.
You were?
Probably, yeah.
And some of it was because they lost some of that setback when they widened the street. Originally, Plum was two lanes, Thirtieth was two lanes, and where that building was, would have had a bigger setback. And so, the way that lot was plotted, it, it seemed like the right thing to do.
But I'm just throwing that out as an example of why you may need, like, particularly on ag, where you might have a larger building, you may not want it, because it's real close to the, the roadway. Or if it happens to be put on a corner, you've got to look at the front, the setbacks on the front and the side, and make sure you're not creating a traffic hazard.
But I would say ag is exempt, though, so keep that in mind. So, you know, even though you would say, yeah, we want a thirty-foot setback, they don't technically have to follow. These are only for non-residential, not, excuse me, non-agricultural buildings, non-agricultural buildings, and so...
But in the, but only in the, but these are, these are guidelines that you give for only in the zoned area of the, of the county.
In that too, yes, yeah, yeah.
Even if it's an ag building, they, they, they have to, they have to conform to these guidelines, do they not?
No.
So, if I built a, a pole shed to put my tractor in, and store a little hay in, I could put my corner post as, as my corner post of my property line?
Yes. Only thing we ask is that you meet the front yard setback, to keep it off the road. But even then, I think...
How do we protect somebody from themselves?
It's a good question.
It's hard, yeah. I mean, I, I, it's, 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 it's a crazy question, but I love my neighbor's death. But it would be absolutely asinine for me to put my corner, my, my corner post in my building as the corner post, corner of my property line.
Right.
So...
That's wasting space.
Well, I get it. I, it's, it's a space I don't have to trim the weeds on, and that kind of thing. I, I get all that. But how do we... All right, that's a, that's a, that's a conver, that's, that's, that's something that probably doesn't apply here as much.
You know, the legislature exempted ag from permits and zoning, and so, you know, and there, you know, there may be some merit, somewhere down the line, you know, somebody wants a building, you know, in a certain location. But generally, I, I think there's not, you know, an issue.
Until, until you, you work, so I'm, I'm rural residential now, okay? And I'm gonna bring my, bring my place up. I'm nine acres. I have to conform by the R-one... I have to conform by the rural, R one rural residential, no matter what building I put up.
Uh, if it's an ag building, I mean, if you, it doesn't make any difference what your zone, it's the use of the building. So if you're gonna put up a garage for your cars, then yeah, you have to conform to that. It doesn't make any difference if your garage holds your tractor or your hay. If you're storing non-agricultural equipment in that building, you have to conform to that setback.
The first pickup I park in that building, it becomes a residential building.
Was the pickup a farm truck?
But you know, you just follow what I'm.
Can't put your wife's car.
I couldn't, can't put the.
But it doesn't make any difference what your zone.
It's painted green. It's painted green, yeah.
Well, okay. I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm trying to get some context on what we need to do.
I mean, I've had situations where, you know, a, a farmer will live on a ten acre plot and then own the surrounding eighty or a hundred and sixty acres, but he wants his agriculture building on his ten acre plot to put his combine in, so it's exempt.
I get you.
Yeah, he's not putting the, he's not putting the combine on his, his farm ground where he's taking up farm ground. He's gonna put it on his ten acres.
That kinda gives me some perspective on what I'm looking at here. And it, you know, the, the ten, the, the tens and the ten foot side yard and the eight foot side yard, I think Alan, you mentioned that. It seems a little weird that we did that. It would make, I, you know, when you're reducing it by eight feet, by two feet on both sides, sometimes that lot gets squeezed a little bit. I, I see where that goes.
Mm-hmm.
But I also can't see that that two feet or that four feet total is gonna make that big a difference over the grand scheme of things.
So that could, you just go up the other way and the R one, make that an eight foot. Make them all eight feet.
Yep, yeah. Yeah. I, I think that, to me, the ag needs to stay put. I, I think in, 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 in that regard, just because we don't have any maximum height restrictions, I think that, in my opinion, the agricultural dimensions need to stay as they are. And then, I, I, I see what you're saying there, Steve. Yeah, make, make that R one eight feet right along with the rest.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to increase the other ones because I think Mark's point was good where you're, you're dealing with lots of an acre or less maybe. And setbacks are, are very important there because you're taking land out that they can't do anything with.
Yep, yep. Rear yard, I think, I think we could go, we could do the very same thing. We could go ten feet across the board from R one down through that village district and not hurt ourselves. That'd be, I mean, that's my opinion.
I kinda agree with you. I mean, in, in reality, if somebody's putting up a new house on a lot, they're not gonna put it right up next to their neighbor's house.
Yep.
Generally, I mean.
If they're looking at.
You know, they're, they're, you know, there are cases where it might happen, but you can control everything.
And it could be such like Ken mentioned, that mother-in-law, we, we have, we have other, other requirements written into our mother-in-law clause with, with how houses, what housing needs to go in and what that looks like. But yeah, that would afford, afford them maybe a little bit different footprint. I agree.
If we were to change these though at some point, uh, uh, that would not negate the option of a property owner to come in and apply for a variance of some sort.
Absolutely not, no, yep, they can still do that.
And when somebody has a house that's just barely meeting the specs now and then, God forbid a tornado comes through or something or a fire and they decide to build a bigger house or build something on, on that side and maybe they don't have room now.
That's why we get the big bucks, Ken.
Yep, yep.
Well, and, and on a lot of the smaller lots, they'll be constricted by the, uh, septic requirements, won't they?
That'll be a big part of it, so.
Yep, yep.
That'll be a big, that's why we always encourage people to get with both of us on those smaller lots so we can get everything laid out accordingly.
And width and depth.
Width and depth and do you think the, the thirty foot may, may be appropriate?
I think for the front yards, I think that's for everything R one through R three and then V one.
Yeah, I think it's, 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 I like the uniformity on the front because if it's, if you don't, you're gonna see somebody out here ten feet further out than everybody else and it just looks weird.
But leave the ag at fifty instead on the front.
I would say leave, leave the ag as written, yeah.
I don't have a problem with the ag, but like I say, the side and the rear, I think we could make those here all across the board for all the R, R and village things.
Eight feet for the side yard and ten, ten feet for the, for the rear, is that what you're thinking, Steve?
Yeah. There's one other thing in here that I did not include in the packet, but, um, there is a provision in Article fourteen for corner lots. So corner lots are parcels that have two, uh, front yards or two roads, okay? And so if you go by this, then you're meeting a thirty foot setback off of both roads.
Which is what we currently would have, right?
What we currently have. This article allows me to reduce one of those roads to a fifteen foot setback. It's the, the shorter of the two roads. So if you, if you've got a, a parcel that's, you know, five hundred foot by, you know, a thousand foot, then the five hundred foot has to be at thirty feet and then the fifteen foot setback could be off of the portion of the road that's a thousand foot. And, and what that does is that tries to give people some relief from having a double, double frontage requirement.
Does the applicant get to choose which?
No, it's set. It's set by your legal description, so. And so that, that, I don't know if that needs to remain in there or not.
I think it does.
You know.
I think that.
That makes sense to me, yeah.
It does make sense.
Yeah, because it's.
Particularly if you get down to the smaller lot sizes. Then you have a poorer lot, then yeah, you got double whammy there.
Well, that's where, yeah, if you look at, okay, you know, do we need thirty foot off the road, roadway? This, because this is off a roadway, this isn't off a section line or anything like this, it's off roadway. And so you're losing, so if you, if you would reduce it.
Just use that hundred and sixty-five foot road frontage that we gotta have.
Yeah, yeah.
You just took thirty feet off of that.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Off of, off of one, off of one, off of. You basically limit them to a hundred and thirty feet of buildable space off of there if they're in a corner lot.
I didn't include it in there, but you know, if, if I can get together a, you know, a formal, formal document for you guys to look at, then you know, we can include that section in there and, and talk about what ifs and, and see if, if that's something that needs to remain. Or do we eliminate that and maybe consider going down to something, something less? If thirty's all right, or is twenty-five feet better, what have you? I mean, you know, there's a lot of different things we can look at, but we can stick with what we got right now and have a few study sessions. We're still looking at, trying to start solar regs as well, but I don't know when that's gonna happen.
Look on, on the, this corner lot deal, Mark. Okay, you have a thirty foot and then you say the regis would provide for a fifteen foot setback on the shorter side. Now, is there any stipulation as to which is actually the front of the house?
Uh, no, it doesn't, it doesn't take any consider.
The front door facing the fifty.
Yeah, it doesn't take any consideration the, the orientation of, of the house. It has all do with the legal description of the parcel and what is the shorter segment along the road. That's all it has to do and then, so that way it gives a person back at least fifteen feet of, of their land if, if it is a shorter, shorter parcel.
I've lived on a couple of corner lots and it just, I know it just means a lot more grass going in.
Yep, yep, yeah, it, it does, yeah. Corner lots are nice, but they do pose a hindrance when, when you have double setback, double front yard setback. We, we have that in there, but it's still posing an issue for, you know, for buildings and stuff as well potentially. Because like I say, you know, if you have a thirty foot setback off of both roads and even reduce it to fifteen, well, I mean, you know, we're looking at going eight and ten potentially, at least eight foot. So that's, when you got double, double frontage, you know, he's got an additional seven foot that he still has to meet, so. But I can include that in a future discussion and everything. Okay, that gives me some idea maybe what you guys are looking at.
So Dom stirred this pot and then he disappeared.
Yes, yep.
Does he always do that to you?
He does that, not too often, no, not, not too often.
Is he getting the answer he's looking for?
Yes.
You're not as fast as he might get.
I don't wanna do it too fast, right?
Yeah, yeah. Certain reasons for it.
So what is the, if we have no one, what's the status of the subdivision down there, is it?
Subdivision is gonna be on for discussion on November the twenty-ninth. Yes.
And when are the new county commissioners?
Not till January. So the subdivision will be on for discussion on the twenty-ninth after I get back. The other two cases are on, on the next Tuesday that are on the consent agenda right now, so.
On the agenda for the county commissioner.
Yeah, so the subdivision will be on the twenty-ninth and, um, we'll be there to discuss that. And then if that's approved then, then that'll kinda give the green light for them to submit the financing package, you know, for the, the road.
And the, the drive-through coffee shop is, it's off and running?
No, it, they have not pulled a permit yet for that. There, I think they're still probably finalizing plans and they have not pulled a permit for the coffee shop yet. So we're still.
It's still a dirt lot.
It's approved, it's been approved and I've done everything on my end and we're just waiting for them to actually submit the permit application for it at this point. And, uh, they have done anything with the culvert yet by knowledge either, so.
No, I was by there yesterday and it was, there was a bunch of, bunch of automobiles parked along the south side of the, of the lot.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Well, I see the guy that owns that lot owns that King Solar, which is just to the south of the, maybe that's employees or something.
No update on that other than they haven't pulled a permit yet. So.
That's too bad, you were probably looking for a cup of coffee, weren't you earlier?
Well, no, I wasn't. I'm just curious, I wanna watch that grow.
Yep, yep, I agree, yeah.
As a chairman, do we have any other business?
That was gonna be my next question.
I know, we're generally.
Then move to second.
We just wanna get out of here.
Move to second to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same signs.
I missed the longest meeting as of year.